Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 26, 2018 Planning Board meeting. Barbara, will you please take the minutes, I mean, the roll of all?
Ms. Corning.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Present.
Ms. Corbina.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
And Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Thank you. Before we work on another excellent job on the minutes, thank you very much, Barbara.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have two minutes for consideration for approval. The first is July 11, 2018.
I recommend we adopt those wonderful minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the second one is from August 8, 2018. Anybody have any, make a motion and we accept, we adopt the minutes from August 8, 2018.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is schedule a site walk date for our North County homes. I think everybody has in front of them some proposed dates. Anybody have any preferences? This, the first one is this Saturday, and then I believe it's following the next four weeks. I'm sorry, here.
I just can't do the 13th.
Okay. What's the consensus?
I cannot do this Saturday.
I can't either.
And could only do next Saturday if it was very early.
Okay.
On the 6th?
What time are you, what time are we looking for?
Whatever everybody wants.
It's nine o'clock early enough?
I can't do the 6th on that. I'm in Rhode Island on Saturday.
I'm sure we could have two dates.
Don't we have to have two dates? Or is it all right to have?
No, we could have two. I mean, I'm sure they'd be willing to come both times.
It's not unusual for a state to.
Not unusual. So let's, do you want to do 6 and 13?
Okay.
Great.
Nine o'clock, earlier, tell me.
October, we're talking about North County.
October, North County, October 6th and 13th. Do you want to go earlier than nine?
No, nine is fine.
13th would have to be as early as possible, but if nine is all it can be, that's it. I'll be at the 13th at nine.
Alright, then, we'll, I guess we'll get in contact with them for those dates. 6th and the 9th, the 6th and the 13th of October for site walks for North County homes at nine o'clock in the morning. Okay. Next on our agenda is a bunch of time extensions. The first one is for DeSiena. It's a request for a 90-day time extension for the additional final conservation subdivision approval of stormwater management and erosion sediment control, wetlands and water course protection, steep slopes permit, and tree preservation permit. The dates are from September 11, 2018 up to and including December 10, 2018. We're also in receipt of a letter from our town planner. It sounds like, Saret, you have no problem granting this extension? Everybody okay?
Mr. Chair, we have one question on this. I just had a conversation with Joe Barber-Gallo before I got here. There's one note that he claims is missing from the plat, that we're claiming that is not applicable to the plat. In any event, if the note is required per Joe's, and he said he'd get back to me on Monday on this. The plat is before you right now for signature.
Okay.
It's upstairs. The question becomes is if the note is required or it's not required, I'm saying the note is not applicable. And what it deals with is just a very triangular area easement that is in favor of the DOT, not the town. And that easement is discharged into that little stream bed that was always there, which has been there for years, and there's an easement associated with it. And the note says, all basically easements, blah, 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 shall be, it's a dedication note that we normally put on the plats when something is proposed. If I'm discharging to off-site properties or into, or the town's taking over a roadway, then basically that note goes on the plat. It's a standard note. I'm saying it doesn't apply in this case because we're not creating any easements. Joe and I are back and forth on this. The code says if it's applicable, we're saying it's not applicable. He's going to get back to me on Monday. The question is would the board be willing to at least acknowledge back to Joe that one way or another, this board doesn't have to take any further action on that plat, subject to Joe's approval? And the question is, do I have to go back to the Health Department and get it re-signed to put that note back on the plat? I'm trying to avoid that. So I'm hoping that Joe calls me on Monday, says, "I'm fine with the plat the way it is. You can sign on Monday and we're done."
Okay. A little, very confusing, but nonetheless, it's kind of a technical thing.
I understand that, and it would be fine if you can sign it. What I don't understand is what happens if it's not fine?
If it's not fine, then this board has acknowledged that everything will come back the way it is. It's, you can grant, he's talking about granting a waiver to the note. I don't think that's, I just don't think the note applies. I mean, you can grant a waiver tonight to the note, but that's not fair to Joe's office in terms of what we've discussed.
I'm not familiar with the background on the issue, but I will follow up with Joe to make sure that it gets resolved.
I just got phone with Joe probably about an hour ago, so, he was in Philadelphia, so.
Well, it doesn't seem like there's any problem. If Joe and you work it out, I'll sign it Monday, otherwise it comes back to us.
We'll take the extension, and I just want to make you aware of what's going on.
Okay. Alright. I don't think, I didn't make a motion for this time extension, did I?
No.
This is for, from September 11, 2018 up to and including December 10, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, a time extension from DeSiena Stevens subdivision. This is also a request for a 90-day time extension. From Sep, no, I don't think so.
Well, I'm interested in it because the main private road is in the middle of being constructed on it, and I thought it would be mentioned.
Saret, I assume that Steve is making regular visits there?
To, I'm sorry.
Okay.
On Zini?
Yes.
No, not on Zini, on Gary Mitchell.
Oh, no, I'm not there yet.
Oh, oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, on Zini, okay. We have a letter from our town planner. Nothing happened in there, right? Okay. So I'll make the motion to grant the extension from September 11, 2018 up to and including December 10, 2018, in accordance with 150-12 and the code of Town of Somers. For the record, the property is located at the corner of Route 100 and 138, and it's in the R80 zone. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're at the Mitchell for La Conservation. We're also in a letter from our town planner, and you also said that Steve makes regular trips there and there's no work has been done at all up to this point, correct?
No.
No, no.
The private road is in the middle of construction.
And when did that start?
It started over Labor Day weekend.
Yep.
And it's a sensitive area. I just thought there would be a re.
If you look, I just, August 13th.
Oh, okay. I didn't reference when your memo was, sorry.
Well, it's kind of got an interior contradiction too, because it says, "Implementation of site improvements continues to take place," but then at the bottom it says, "Steve Wolfle indicates no work has begun on the project."
That's not true.
So it's had an internal inconsistency.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I was expecting that we would hear a report. It's a major cut, a lot of trucks going in and out, and it was a dangerous, it's a dangerous road going in because there's an old house right next to it, and there were concerns by the engineer that correct things would be done not to undermine that house and what have you.
Well, one, I will check with Steve.
I mean, I'm not opposed.
Steve is out in the field pretty much all day, every day, checking on everything, but I will.
Yeah, I have to believe, he couldn't miss it.
Make sure that this is being watched.
I'm sure my fellow Jan knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
You can't miss it.
Can't miss it. I'm not opposed to this renewal. I mean, it's certainly necessary, but I was expecting a report.
Tim, did you want to volunteer some information?
Just to clarify, the construction is underway.
Oh.
And.
You'll do.
I knew. I saw the conflicting reports, and we're unfortunately, I represent Gary and Mrs. Mitchell, and Ann Mitchell on this application, but we're not the engineers of record for construction.
Okay.
So Steve knows that. Steve is well aware of, we had the pre-construction meeting, everything else, so they are under construction, just to clarify that. And we're asking for an extension of the final Somers approval.
Right. I expressed my concerns, had to do with the old house that's right on the, sits on.
I would like to say, fortunately or unfortunately, that's not our problem anymore, but certainly it's.
Understood.
It is obviously a concern that we all have to go through this process.
But you'll share with Steve.
Maybe we'll get a memo, Saret, from Steve or somebody. Okay. Then I'll make the motion that we grant the time, the 90-day time extension from September 21, 2018 up to and including December 19, 2018. And for the record, this property is located on the west side of Tomahawk Street, Route 118, in a residential R40 zoning district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Tamarack and Vine. We're also in receipt of some letters for that. One is from Barry Perlow, and also from our town planner. And he mentioned in his letter that all the rec fees are paid in full. It's correct, Saret?
Yes.
Okay. This is for a 90-day time extension, also a re-grant. This is the second one, and the dates are from September 10, 2018 up to and including December 9, 2018. And for the record, this property is located on the Westerly side of Level Street, and it's in the R40 zone. Second?
Second.
Comments? No comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And last is McKenna, final subdivision approval. This is their first request for a 90-day time extension. We're also in receipt of two letters, one from our town planner and one from Inside Engineering. The dates for this are September 11, 2018 up to and including December 10, 2018. For the record, this property is located at 2652 North New York State 35, and it's in the R80 zone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we have two projects to review. One is, how did you say, pronounce this again?
Manto.
Manto. Yes, would you like to come up, please? This is an application for a wetland permit, erosion control permit, and stormwater management and erosion and sediment control permit by Peter J. Gregory, the B.E., and it's for the owner Philip Manto, for the installation of an 18-by-40 in-ground pool and a wetland buffer. The property is located at 76 Mosman Avenue, and it's in the R80 zone. We're in receipt of two letters, one from the Open Space Committee and one from Woodard and Curran. Thank you. If you'd like to come up and just give us a brief representation, please?
My name is Ken Thompson. My company is Bedford Pool Scape Inc. And with me tonight is Peter Gregory of Keane Koppelman Engineers in Mount Kisco. Our company is located in Bedford Village. The property has a great deal of wetlands on it. There is a pond on the property. There is a wetlands finger that comes in on the left-hand side of what you're looking at there as the property, and there is a finger that extends on the right-hand side from the pond. So a great deal of the property is encompassed by wetlands. Peter, if you can show the house, the wetland setback line actually comes up to about the center of the dwelling. So there is no lot of space on the property that is not affected by wetlands. Some years ago, when the septic system had to be rebuilt, the septic system was put on the top side of the pond. The drawing that you're looking at there actually represents about 50% of the property. The rest of it is up at the top, and I'll show you a diagram of that in a moment. So the property is severely restricted. What we're hoping to do is to place a pool behind the existing barn, create a boulder retaining on the left-hand side, which will form a natural barrier to the wetlands, and also a boulder retaining at the end of the pool. May I, what there, I don't know.
Can you hear me if I?
You can take it off.
You can take it off.
There's also a pointer hanging from the bottom if you want to use the pointer as well.
So locating the pool here, we brought it in about as close to the garage as we can, and still allotting for a little bit of patio space here. All the access would be on this side of the barn, and we would do, initially we had talked about a restoration plan, and I had gone to Steve to discuss with him what might be appropriate. What I did here, just to give you some idea of the scope of the property, this is standing about 20 feet from the pond, looking back at the house.
We can't see what you're pointing to. Could you turn that?
Turn the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's it, that's good.
Thank you. So this is standing on the edge of what is now substantial growth. This is looking at the end of the barn. The area that we're thinking about in terms of the pool would be right back in this area. This is looking to the rear of the property, and this is a town-maintained drainage area that's part of a drainage easement that exists on the property. Some years ago, I believe back in 2008, the town from the previous owner took over an easement in here to create a drainage area to solve the problem that existed on the road. At that time, they built a fairly large holding basin back adjacent to the pond, filled it with gravel, planted it in, and then put appropriate wetlands plants around it to help the absorption rate. What has happened up to this point now, it's done so well that it's basically become very, very dense foliage. So, and this is actually, I crawled back in there to take a picture of what the town had built, which looked like this. So, one of the things we had talked about as part of the mitigation for putting in the pool was to try to create an accessway so that these areas could be examined and cleaned if necessary for maintenance purposes. So that's why I didn't, it's just an ongoing discussion with Steve and the homeowner.
Currently, the town has an easement.
That is correct.
And currently, the town is responsible to keep that clean.
That's correct.
So therefore, to have access, they have the right to access the property.
That is.
I'm trying to understand what you're talking about. I am familiar with a little bit, because I spoke to Peter. So what you're trying to describe is if you were to put the pool in where you're suggesting, an alternative manner for the town to gain access to cleaning out?
Well, what normally I would do, and of course with Peter's help, we have, if we're placing the pool back in here, normally we would propose a mitigation plan immediately surrounding the pool. What we are, might do, and this is not a necessary thing, it's just something that Steve brought up, is to create better access for the town, because it's become so overgrown and so dense at this juncture that literally you can't get into any of this. Basically, the closest point looks like that. And this would all be part of ongoing discussion, because otherwise what we would do is develop a full mitigation plan for this. The property is a little bit complicated in that the original septic system, which was in here, was abandoned in favor of using it for house drainage. And the new system, and they said, I guess, partially failed. And the new system is actually located up in here, and it's pumped from a pump chamber down in here through a long line which goes up to the new field. It's rather, everything about the property is a little bit unusual.
Does that line go underneath the site for the pool?
No, the line crosses right in through here, so that would be outside the line of the pool. And if, for any reason, that drawing was inaccurate, because it's forced main, it's fairly simple to move. It's not a large line.
I want to ask one question about the pool.
Yes.
The, if I'm reading this right, the elevation for the pool is 81 feet? And this, you have a one-to-three-foot-high wall that's building around it?
Correct. That would be surrounding it in this area.
Right. Now, the.
A boulder wall.
Is there any effect, is there any problem with the, since you have a, I'm trying to find out what the level of the pond is. Is there any problem with water table here?
I don't believe there would be, but if it's necessary during the course of construction, we would prepare the proper mechanism and filters for pumping the excavation so that.
Yeah, but I'm more concerned about, is there, would you run into any problem where the water table is pushing your pool up?
Once, what we always do in any kind of area where there's wetlands is we take the proper hydrostatic situation into consideration. Every pool we build has a hydrostatic plug underneath the bottom, which will cause water to come into the pool should the pressure under the pool become too great. In a situation like this, we would probably put three hydrostatic plugs in just for extra insurance, so to speak.
Okay.
Alright.
And once water is in it, it's not a problem. What, when it can become a problem is if all the water is removed for any kind of maintenance. Yep.
I have, I have three comments slash questions. And one is, I'd like to see the easement shown on the plan in some way, shape, or form. You have it up there, but we don't have.
We don't have any of this information.
On our plan.
Oh, okay.
So I'd like to see that. And I also, and maybe I'm not seeing it clearly, but I see one wetland buffer, but I don't see the other one on this, on this plan that I have here.
Yeah, we're missing.
One is here.
Is that the?
No, that's a wetlands line. And one is here, the wetlands, the wetlands buffer line actually comes in through here.
So I see it coming through here, but then it appears to come back towards Mosman. And so.
Yes.
If I'm reading this, the pool is 100% in the wetlands buffer?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question is the treatment of the water. Is this a chlorine system, a salt system? Where's the backwash? How are you addressing?
Well, what we would need to do, moving forward on construction, first of all, it'd be a cartridge filter so there would be no backwash. And the next thing we would have to do is examine the abandoned system to find out if any drawdown at all of it had to take place, that that system would handle it. If not, we would have to construct a system, and it would have to be designed. Mr. Gregory's office would do that with the appropriate coltex and the size of the system based on the absorption rate of the ground.
Understood. Would that be, would that also be within the wetlands buffer, that coltex?
Probably, because it's almost impossible to get outside of it.
And can I just, do you have a second? In terms of the easement, I want to make sure I understood what you said when you pointed to that picture.
It comes in.
Right, so it's here.
This way.
Here, it's this and there.
Yes.
You described the foliage as being heavily developed, so is.
Very dense along here.
Right here, so are there trees, or what exactly is the growth?
Well, it's a combination. You can see some of it here. There is some aged trees along the line. And what has happened, it is.
So this is here?
Yes.
Can I orient myself?
Yes.
So you're on that property as you're taking the photograph in and showing that?
I am, for that photograph, I am standing here looking this way.
Okay, so that is there.
Yes. And this heavily foliage area is all right in here, so there's no pathway to get back to this.
It would, I think, it would help me, if you're saying there's some trees there of any caliber, like above, wider than, let's say, four inches, or were you all talking about bushes?
For the most part, I believe it is, I believe it's bushes to items that are a couple of inches in caliber. But what we would do is a more thorough investigation of this if we move forward with the project, naturally.
There's a well marked on here.
Correct.
So that, is that well, the way you're showing it, that well should, is in the middle of that easement, it looks like. You see a well marked on it?
Right here, probably off to just one side of it, would be my.
Is that an active, is that an existing well, an active well?
I believe it is. I believe it is.
Do they get water from that?
Yes.
It's your Artesian well.
Because the septic was originally located in the back before it was moved well to the other side of the pond.
Would you point to the pond?
This is the pond here.
Alright. When I looked, we have access to the aerials going back to 1950. And there appear to be two ponds.
Well, the area of the drawdown, depending on when you look at it, that could appear to be another pond. Right now, it's so heavily foliage in, you can't really see too much of the pond from the house.
If there's any more board comments, we can come back. I was just gonna have you run through your memo, if you don't mind. Oh, no, you're.
No, sorry, I'm waiting to hear how to engineer.
Sure, so we had a number of comments. Some are, you know, minor and notes and things like that. We, I think, want to make sure that the limits of disturbance are correctly identified for stormwater permitting purposes.
Sure.
Especially as it relates to any. Especially as it relates to any additional work that needs to be done to accommodate the backwash.
All right.
The limit of disturbance do not include any of the work that we're discussing in terms of going back in and cleaning out that...
The town's basin.
Yeah, I think that that would be considered a maintenance activity, anyway.
Okay, right. The limits of disturbance are just associated with the work around the pool, the regrading the walls and the pool itself.
Correct. And I guess my point there is, it's obviously less than the 5,000 square foot limit if additional site work is necessary for backwash that may impact that.
It's close to 5,000, so are we sure it's less than 5,000?
As the applicant has shown it on the plans, it is less than 5,000.
Okay, it was just because it was so close. I needed to hear from you.
What we try to do is whenever it's close, we highlight that it's close, so that everyone is aware that, you know, we're not well below and little changes can impact that.
And if I can just add one thing to the area of disturbance, the intent would be to come in on this side of the garage and do all of the work from this side, basically using the created accessway. So the boulders would be placed first, and then the excavation done.
That sounds prudent.
And no fill would be introduced to any of the wetland area, obviously.
I would like to comment. This property is directly opposite the entrance to North Lane. That's just to give everybody an idea of where it's located. And it's on a hill that has a lot of history. And in terms of the history, if we go below this property, we hit Wood Street. And the town has infrastructure at Wood Street. And so my concern has to do with the highway system. And when I learned that we have stormwater being dealt with, the town has an easement here, I have grave concerns that... In terms of mitigation, could the applicant be made responsible to clean out that basin? Would that be a fair mitigation portion? I'm not an engineer, but I'm just thinking of our town roadway. This is a hill, and we have household after household doing things. We have other applicants that have come before us with their pools and their ponds and their what-have-you. And you're talking about putting a boulder to protect your pool? That means you're protecting your pool from what? Water, water pressure, what?
No, actually, what I meant to say by a physical barrier, a physical, in other words, you can't walk directly from where the pool is into the, into the wetlands. The purpose of the boulder wall is there is a grade here that drops down slightly. So by creating a boulder wall, we can create a level area there for the pool to go into. So we're not really using the wall to keep anything out. We're just adjusting the grade.
It's not altering where water goes?
No, no, not at all.
My concern is the...
You're building up the pool. You're only up the pool three feet.
Because the grade, if the grade's about like this, we've got to bring it up in order to construct the pool.
You understand my concern, I'm all for having a pool, but my concern is our infrastructure, our roadway infrastructure.
We, this project adds nothing to the roadway or the accessway. And by the way, in every project we do, we are very cognizant of using natural drainage and natural pitches as opposed to contrived drainage. Because in my own experience, and before starting Bedford Pool Scares 25 years ago, I managed the land in New Construction Division of Coldwell Banker. And I know that contrived drainage is one thing at this time of year. It's another thing when there are leaves on the ground, and there's another thing when you have snow on the ground and then a quick frost. So we're very cognizant of that in what we design and construct. We like to have happy customers. So, Peter, did you want to add?
No, are you finished?
I'm sorry.
I think that the question about mitigation measures is something...
Is that a fair thing to do?
I think that we were all, from our perspective, we were concerned about the wetland water quality and looking at the existing town code and the mitigation measures that are included in the code for disturbance of the wetland buffer. We were proposing a rain garden or some other kind of water quality mitigation or treatment measure to handle the new impervious surface being proposed, so that there's, we can mitigate the water quality impacts to the wetland. I wasn't privy to the conversation with Steve Wolfe about any other mitigation measures that might need to be considered in lieu of or supplemental to those that we discussed in our memo.
And I'm not suggesting that as an alternative to a rain garden, because we've certainly done a number of those, but it's just a potential for further discussion.
I'm confused about the rain garden. You're concerned about the impervious surface, okay? But right now, water is flowing down that hill into a pond, right?
It's flowing across a vegetated surface.
Into a pond.
That's downhill from the vegetated surface, yes.
So I'm saying is if they, assuming they put a pool in the middle of that hill, the water's still, whatever water's there is still going to go with... I mean, they have a pond.
Yes.
So wouldn't that act as a rain garden aspect?
I think we would want to make sure that the water quality that goes into the pond and then subsequently downstream through the rest of the system is maintained, the quality there. So that, we, stormwater, we talked about that in terms of limits of disturbance. Some confirmation from, we've requested that the applicant provide confirmation from the DEP that they don't feel that they have any jurisdiction there. We talked about the mitigation measures regarding water quality volume consistent with wetland buffer disturbance in the town code. We also had a comment about backwash and a... De-watering procedures, backwash procedures to understand potential impacts there. We had a note about the wetland boundary drawings, a couple of details for construction just to confirm the limits of disturbance on that. Various notes that we had. I think that those are the substantive comments that we had. Did you have any questions or anything like that that we can, I can help clarify?
Just taking that one step further, if there was some mitigation for cleaners, would that be on a regular basis? I mean, is it, I've never heard of that being done before. You can ask an applicant to clean, clean something on a regular basis, especially if it's, if it was set up originally for the town. I mean, have you ever heard of that before?
I, it would certainly be an unusual situation. I'm not sure that I understood whether the proposed was a one-time provide access versus an ongoing obligation.
It was a one-time shot. Because evidently, it's not in good shape at the moment.
And would that, would we have to access a tobacco or something? This is not just handwork, obviously.
I think you'd want to be sensitive to the environment that it's in. I think we'd need to take a closer look to see what type of work would be necessary to make sure that it's functioning as it intend, as originally intended as a stormwater mitigation measure.
Now, I believe that the intent that Steve had in bringing this up, and I'm not going to put words in his mouth because it's certainly at an exploratory point. And I just broached it with the homeowner, asking if they would be willing to clear sometime of access to these basins. I believe that Steve's issue was that he thought at this juncture that the undergrowth has done so well because of the nature of what it is. Nature has kind of taken over to a point where he was reluctant to have people from the town go in and clear an accessway on someone else's property. So the thought might be to make an acceptable way to get into those areas that should be maintained and looked after, such that the town can then easily walk onto the property or notify the homeowner they're walking onto the property and gain access to whatever it is they need to examine back there to make sure that everything is functioning properly.
I mean, the easement is in place. I mean, the town already has.
That's correct, but...
There's one in my neighborhood where they periodically drive their truck down to clean it out.
But in order to, this is, again, a little bit unusual because it is so far back and the vegetation all the way has gotten as dense as it has gotten. So consequently, it might be easier just to pull up to the driveway and send a couple of men down a path to get into these, the couple of locations there that seem to be very important, the overflow and the outlet. But again, I'm not, I'm not the town engineer, but it's something for discussion.
Have you seen the memo written by the Open Space Committee? Have you seen that yet?
No, I have not, no.
All right, because they, they mentioned, I'll just read what... "The committee is disinclined to favor the application as the paperwork provide lacks information. There is no indication as to where the septic fields are, which I assume you could add."
Yeah.
Which is not too bad. And then I don't understand something. It says, "Or who established the wetland boundaries?" What is, what does, does any, can anybody tell me what that means?
Yeah, the, we have two letters on it, actually. We have the wetland boundary line that was established when the septic system was designed for the installation of the septic system. And then we had a second wetlands engineer go in and establish the fact that the wetland boundary had not changed because we knew that that subject would come up because it had been done so many years ago.
All right, so you, I assume you've got a copy of it?
Oh, yes, sure.
We have a copy in our, in our file. It's Roy Shook Associates, a letter dated June 13th, which speaks to that concern. So it must be that Open Space didn't get a copy somehow, but it's part of our file.
Oh, okay.
So it seems complete.
Sorry.
No problems, good to bring up, but evidently, they, they didn't get a copy or overlook. Something, something happened in there.
Any other questions either way?
Not at the moment.
Saret? Well, I guess you probably want to address Woodard and Curran's questions before you come back next time.
Yes, I will certainly, all the things that have been brought up, and we will add those items to the drawing for review. And I will also see if perhaps I can meet Steve out on the property and get some clarification that if we were to do something, what it is that would have to be done in order to help out. That scenario.
I'm thinking that when we do the site walk, it should stake out the easement.
Do you want to, do you want to piggyback the site walks?
I'm just wondering if it would make sense if they could stake the easement, if it's too soon, but I would definitely say stake out the easement. I'd hate for it to get early snow.
We have, we have two site walks planned for the 6th and the 13th of October.
Okay.
Is that enough time for you to stake out the easements? And, oh, I should ask if you'd be able to get there on one of those dates.
I will discuss that with Joe.
We have to pin down the time because on the 6th, we're doing it at 9:00 AM.
So I could not stay on the 6th, but I could do it on the 13th.
And I can't do it on the 13th.
Do you mind doing two?
No, you know, what can happen is one of us can certainly meet you over there. We could do a rough approximation of how that easement comes in, how far back it goes. I'll stake these corners, and you will see how dense that area back in there has become. Okay? So I'll try to put some red arrows out there too.
Excuse me? 6 and 13?
Yes.
And you have to pin down a time.
Yeah, I mean...
10:00 AM?
Yeah, I can't imagine the first one taking an hour.
Yeah, but you have to get from one place to the other. That's in South Somers, and the other one is in North Somers. 15 minutes apart.
We can go from there.
No, I wouldn't plan on going too deep into it at this point. But you can get a pretty fair idea of what the concern is.
Why don't we shoot, we'll try to be as close as we can, 9:30 quarter to 10, okay?
All right, that's fine.
And that's on the 6th?
And the 13th.
And the 13th.
And then, Barbara, you'll send out another memo reminding us. Some of us don't have the memo we used to have. I'm speaking for myself.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Oh, now the strange...
Next on our agenda is an application for a wetland permit by Greg and Christine Odell for property located at 157 Route 118 for stormwater improvements related to improving the water quality that include a new cover dumpster pad for a new horse manure dumpster, gravel laneway for a dumpster pad, new fencing, extension of the water line, and electricity for new hydrant and waterers. And for the record, this property is located in an R40 zoning district. We're also in receipt for this application of a letter from the Open Space Committee. Evening. Just, yeah, just turn a little more and then use the mic, if you would, please. You can take it off of there. And just, just turn it for a minute so that the public can see, and then you can come back to us, if you would. Just turn that off so they can see it. Yeah. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Andy Chung. I'm a... My name's Andy Chung. I'm an engineer for the Watershed Agricultural Council. And for those of you who don't know the Watershed Agricultural Council, we are kind of like a sister organization to the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation, whereas our funding is directly from the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. And what we do is we design, install pollution prevention BMPs on agricultural properties.
Oh, neat.
All right, so on this side of the river, east of Hudson, I work on about 75 farms everywhere from North Salem all the way down to Bedford and parts of Connecticut. My other office in Walton, New York, we work on about 350 farms because the majority of New York City's water come from the Catskill Delaware Reservoir. Our east of Hudson office in Yorktown services about 30% of New York City's water. So actually, that number has gone up because of the repairs on the other side of the river. Where DEP is actually taking more water from our Croton reservoir system until that repair is done. So this particular property, we've been trying to get into our program for the past three years. And the reason we wanted them in our program is because they are within a stone's throw to the Amawak Reservoir. And for those of you who don't know this property, they've historically have had horses. They've had historically done training, boarding, a lot of equine activities. And of course, with equine activities, there's going to be manure and a lot of waste product. So our organization, what we do is we want to separate... So our organization, what we do is we want to separate the wastewater from the clean water. We want to keep all the wastewater away so it doesn't end up in our reservoirs, which causes, you know, the green, blue algae, which you kind of see in some of our reservoirs now. And that's caused from, you know, the nitrogen and the phosphorus from fertilizer and also from horse manure and cow manure for some of our dairy operations. So when they got into our program, we ended up designing a slew of BMPs best management practices to prevent wastewater from entering our reservoir. So a couple of these BMPs have used air protection, fencing, forest biomass planting, access road, roof runoff structures. All of these BMPs collectively will prevent wastewater from being generated at the site and leaving the site to go into the reservoir. So as far as the design goes, we designed NRCS standards. We designed the DEP standards and also the DEC standards. And we certify, we do all the procurement, we select the contractor, we do all the construction inspections. So we basically do everything from survey and design all the way to project completion and closeout. And then DEP signs off on it as a project that's completely done and then they get credit for that particular farm. So a couple of pictures, what's, what's going on here. There is an existing pond on the south side of the property. And basically, everything flows from the north down to the south. Everything collects in this pond here. And this pond is typically always full of algae. And all the waste ends up in this, in this pond here. So as far as the structure for water control, I'm going to try to hit on several of these BMPs that we're doing. And I think when I explain it, it'll kind of make sense what we're doing. For the structure for water control, the adjacent property north of there, there's a pretty sizable drainage area which flows from the north to the south. And over the years, it's caused this stream, if you will, that meanders from the north to the south into the pond. Well, this stream is right in the middle of their paddock where they have roughly nine, 10, 11 horses that drink from the stream, that do stuff in the stream.
You can say poop.
Poop. So we want to keep that away from our, from our stream. So what I've designed for a structure for water control is, there's already an existing sediment basin that they kind of dug out to create the stream. My design will, well, I size it for a 25-year, 24-hour storm event. The overflow from that basin comes out through a riser pipe into a 15-inch culvert, which is, which, which flows into the existing pond. So we, so my design eliminates the surface water accumulation from...
It may be better to show it on this.
Yep, yep.
Show it on this, for this map.
Yeah, next sheet here. So there's, there's several BMPs that we've designed to handle the storm.
Yeah, this is, it'll be clear on this.
Okay, so this is the basin that I designed for 25- to 24-hour storm. Basically, a riser pipe, so as the water level rises, it goes through, through, through the pipe. Everything is hard piped in. Everything will be graded, so that way when horses are walking on it, they're not, it's, there's no waste stream that's going into, into this pond here. So that's the structure for water control. We've also bisected some paddocks. What we have this, this program, it's basically a, it's called rotational grazing and it's a farming type of BMP. We don't, right now, the horses just kind of go everywhere and they punch everything up. So our plan is to bisect the existing fields. So horses will stay in one area over the course of a year and we let this paddock rest and revegetate. And then the following year, we swap the horses on this field so they can reseed and remulch and revegetate this area. So at any given time, we want as much vegetation on the ground as possible. So while we, while, while we're bisecting these paddocks, horses need to drink. So the other portion of the BMPs that we're installing is tying in to an existing water line and electric line in the house and another water line and electric line that's in an existing wellhouse, pulling electric and water and installing a couple of Nelson waterers for watering for the, for the horses. In addition, again, wastewater, what they've been doing is they've been collecting manure that's on the field and basically stockpiling it right over here. It's an okay practice. It's a cheap practice. We don't want them doing that anymore because we have manure. It's not controlled. Every time it rains, where does it go? It runs into here. So to combat that, we're forcing them to put in a covered dumpster pad. And the dumpster pad will have a 30-yard dumpster in there at any given time. Anytime they clean out their barn, anytime they, they rake the fields of, of manure, it goes directly into the dumpster. It's covered. So when it rains, water doesn't get into it and create wastewater. And depending on frequency, the number of horses they have, approximately once to twice a month, that dumpster gets hauled off-site, a new dumpster gets put into place. And the landowner will be responsible for paying the dumpster fees and everything. So because we have this covered dumpster here and it's basically in the middle of a dirt paddock, we've created this access road that will allow for a truck to enter here once or twice a month to pick up a dumpster and to drop off a dumpster. So that's the, that's the heavy use.
Where is Route 118?
I'm sorry?
Where is Route 118? Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yep, this is the main, this is their main entrance.
Right.
And then the other, the other temporary or, you know, entrance that's used once or twice a month is, is, is right here.
Question?
Yes.
This goes back to actually before you started talking. The, who, who, who's going to pay for all this?
DEP pays for this.
DEP pays for this?
Yes.
Okay, so these people are pretty happy with this going on?
Correct, correct. Well, it's, it's, it's a give and take, right? Because it's, we're...
They're relatively happy.
They're relatively happy. They, one of the reasons why they hesitated for so long, we've been knocking on their doors for the past, you know, two, two to three years. They think we're regulatory. We're going to come in and start fining them. We're, 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 we're a non-regulatory agency. So the history of the Watershed Ag Council, back in the, back when they built the reservoirs up in the Catskills, they basically kicked all the farmers off their land and created these reservoirs that nobody wanted. So to combat that, we, the DEP created us and said, "Now, we're going to give something back to the farmers. We're going to pay for everything, but all of your pollution prevention devices and pollution prevention plans and designs have to meet NRCS specifications, our DEP regulations, and DEC regulations."
So for the, so for the last two or three years, all of this stuff, call it stuff, has been flowing into the Amawak Reservoir?
This is a very, this is a very old historic farm. It's been in the family for a very long time.
So for a very long time.
It predates, it predates anybody paying attention.
So for a very long time, it's been flowing into the Amawak Reservoir?
And, and has, and has been standard practice. I mean, what you're doing is, is changing.
Changing the standard practice, yeah. It isn't just here.
No, no, I know.
I can name some others. It's okay. It really is cool.
So this is one of, of, well, you can't even have Stewart's Farm.
No, no, this is, this sounds great.
So we've, we've worked on every farm in, in Somers. I'm actually a Somers resident. So we've worked on every farm here in Somers. We've worked on Stewart's Farm. We've built an agrochemical handling facility there for him to mix his chemicals before he sprays.
Yes.
We've, Tomahawk Farm, this is the next one that we, we're planning on doing. We've worked on Heritage Farm, which is Dick Nelly's farm on Lally Place, Lally Drive. So we, we, we're, we're known in the farming community, you know, with as little farms as there are. You have the 75 or so of these, East of Hudson Ranch.
What about the Race Farm?
Which, which one is that?
Barry Schwartz.
Oh, oh, Stonewall, yes. We've, we've, we've built the compost pad and a lot of drainage on that, on that property too. Yeah, so a lot of this stuff is, is, you know, standard BMP practice. Again, what we do, once, once this gets approved by, by, by the board, I mean, we've... I, I do attend board meetings. Very rarely do I really ask for approval just because DEP already allows us to do it and DEC allows us to do it. But Steve wanted me to come in front of you guys and, and tell you what, what, what we're doing and if you had any questions or comments or anything that you wanted to discuss.
Then technically, you guys don't have to review this. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we've been asked to hold off on any review of these, so we've not touched them.
So technically, what, why is he before us?
That's, I was, I was going to say that.
FYI?
Well, and FYI, and administratively, I think Steve was talking about a wetland permit.
Uh-huh.
Is, is, where is the wetland on the...
It, it is, it is way down here. There's, there's a stream that kind of runs like this and then that 100-foot check zone is like right here.
So the stream and ponds on the property are not?
No, no.
And you're not in, and you're not in, inside the boundary?
He's not in the boundary? So he, does he need a wetland?
I don't know. Why would he?
Is this kind of like the CEA? That, the whole thing with North County, that because they're within a certain area, they, it's flagged?
One of those, yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Oh, yeah. Is it in the East of Hudson? I mean, are we into one of those?
You are in the East of Hudson Watershed. That's why they're paying for the improvements, yeah.
We are, yeah.
We appreciate your being here, that's for sure.
Thank you. Say dirty.
So the water that's flowing from the property, the property above on the map as shown, that's flowing across, that's not in any way regulated? That's...
It's not.
No, it's, it's stormwater runoff from probably roof, roof water. Everything kind of slopes down towards this corner right here. And actually, my suspicion was right. I came out here in a rainstorm and there's a stone wall right here and this five acre drainage area. I mean, you can see like a river just kind of following this stone wall and dumping into this.
So you're going to collect all that water?
We're going to collect all of that water and then pipe it directly so, so it doesn't get contaminated with waste before it reaches the pond.
And so you sort of, you divide it in half, the, basically, the amount of field that the horses have, so you still have plenty of room for them? There's no welfare issue, anything like that?
No.
It's still a big piece of land?
No, they, they still have, you know, all of this area. They created a paddock here already. They're kind of roaming around this area. And the same thing, we're going to fence this off here so they can rotate. So at any given time, one area will always up grass. Give them, they can beat up the other area. And the next year, they'll just flock them, put the horses here and let this area be grass.
I'm impressed. This is...
This is great.
This is very good. Yeah, this is, this is really good.
So what do we need?
Yeah, what do we need to do?
Probably not.
What do you need from us?
Probably not.
You don't need any approvals from us, it sounds like.
We appreciate your...
Well, wait a minute.
Not with any wetlands?
Steve talked about a wetland permit. Now, there might be, I mean, the town might consider this a town wetland. I'm, I'm not, like, I don't have that, that mapping. I have the DEP mapping and the DEC mapping. And both of those mappings not telling me that any of this area here is part of the 100-foot check zone.
Are you looking to make an additional curb cut on 118, which would be a DOT issue?
No, there's no...
There's no curb cut?
There's no, there's no curb cut there.
You're just putting in a fence?
Uh, yep. I'm just basically putting a fence.
But it's on his property.
But you're, you're going to bring a truck in, is that...
It's going to go in the other entrance, I assume.
No, I thought you said the truck was going to come from 118 and down there to the pad.
Right. This is currently open right now.
Okay.
So right now, their indoor or their outdoor riding ring, for them to bring in material for here, their, their truck comes.
All right, so this is already a...
They already had an entry.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just developing the en, the road a little more. Because right now, it's just mud.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm developing it more so it doesn't create more of an issue. So basically, a one-foot compacted gravel with a geotextile, you know, nine inches compacted, item four, three inches of compacted, one inch minus.
I'm just looking at it, trying to think what possible approvals that could be from us, and that wouldn't even be us, so.
Yeah, I, I think from our perspective, again, we, we hadn't looked at this at all as, as we were asked. It would just be to confirm whether there is a town wetland on or adjacent to the property, which would require a wetland permit.
And there's no...
And if there's not, then we're, we're done.
Okay, so we need to...
So we can review that with Steve and see what's...
Okay, and then if there's not, issue a memo and then...
We'll issue a memo that will tell you.
Okay.
Who, who does it go to? To the Odells or to you?
Uh, either or.
Either or.
Or both?
Or both.
Both, okay. Memo should go to both. And the memo will say...
Thanks.
Permit needed or not?
Or not.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
And to think this has all started in 1877 when the state of New York allowed the city of New York to condemn the farmland here.
Yeah, yeah, I think something similar happened.
1877.
So now we have this kind of sport thing to work with and, and, you know, our sister organization, East of Hudson Watershed Corporation. We're all about reducing phosphorus and, you know, their numbers. You can probably get a credit for this too because we're, we're going to be reducing phosphorus.
Oh, did you hear that?
I heard it loudly clear.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um...
And thank the Odell's.
Yes. Last on our agenda is discussion of the tax amendment about the invasive plant thing. I mean, I guess everybody got your read.
Yes.
We were talking before the meeting. To me, it's kind of a mute point. These are prohibited plants. So I, I'm not exactly sure what the town board was looking for, for us, from us. I mean, why, why wouldn't you? It's, they're prohibited already in the state.
Yeah, I, I was...
And I assume it's just some kind of an amendment to our town code.
I don't understand why the town would just replicate what the state has already done.
Well, I think it's enforcing it, right? That's, that's how I read it is, so should we find...
We already have the power to enforce the state. We swear to uphold the state constitution. That's my point. I don't understand why we would repeat and make a town code.
I do know that at one of the recent town board meetings, there was a resident who raised a concern about maintenance of bamboo on her neighbor's property, and I'm not sure if that drove the issue to come to you. I don't know if it was more about the maintenance than about the sale or planting.
If I read this correctly, you can't necessarily force people to remove it if it's existing. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, that, well, any of these that are in here are dealing with new plant...
Correct, and the sale of...
Yeah, what, what...
Well, and the maintenance of...
Yeah, what happens...
Maintenance of, invasive onto your neighbor, right.
Yeah, but what happens, what happens if you have a planted bamboo area in 2018 and that bamboo area becomes twice as large in two or three years, which bamboo has a tendency to do?
But if it's in your own property, that's, who cares?
Well, I thought the bamboo is illegal.
It is, but are you saying it was, it was started in 2018?
No, no, I'm just saying, let's say, let's say it's, let's say they have, I mean, are there any restrictions on, yeah, you, you can't tell somebody he's got to remove his bamboo.
No.
But can you tell them that they have to control their bamboo? Because I mean, literally, if you don't, if you don't have, I, I don't even know bamboo because I'm familiar with bamboo, but bamboo could, could take over the county.
Right, but, but I guess, I guess it crosses the line if it takes over the neighbor's property.
Well, if, if you look at the one, the legislation from your table, there, one of the pieces, pieces of legislation... At the beginning, the 49.4B is talking about the duty to confine the...
Right, okay.
So that's the one thing that doesn't necessarily, despite the state saying it's prohibited. If it's on property, that may be, you know, what this person came to the town board to discuss. And that's what at least this particular piece of legislation is trying to enforce a property owner to do.
Is to control it.
Right, well, that seems to be important.
That's different.
So really, what the town board appears to be asking, though we haven't discussed it yet, is, do you think the town should enact any legislation or any piece of any legislation that some of these other towns have found, you know, themselves... you know, themselves in a position to enact? And they're looking for input from the board.
I for one would think that there should be, if some, whenever this rule that we're talking about is established, there should be an established data point and that these invasive plants should be contained within that restricted area. I have a very short little story about a friend of mine who owned a house and a pool in the Hamptons, and his wife loved bamboo, so she decided to put some bamboo at the edge, not the edge of the pool, but, and a couple of years later, the pool started rising out of the door. And he had even put an eighteen or twenty-inch piece of metal between the bamboo and the pond. Luckily, this was a very rich doctor, so he could afford it, but this pool just started to rise because of the bamboo. Bamboo is really dangerous.
It's very invasive, yeah.
It's very invasive.
It's like cats do the same thing, but I don't know.
And it's very strong.
So my concern, so we put it, I like when there are things in the code that they be enforceable.
Yes.
Right, so, so we say, okay, you're responsible to maintain it and prevent it from going on someone else's property, as of, pick a day.
Right.
January first, twenty nineteen, okay? So then, somebody doesn't maintain it, and it goes on someone's property. Who enforces it, how is it enforced? What's the monetary impact of it? Are we accepting responsibility because we've said you have to, you have to maintain it, and they're not maintaining it, but our code says that you have to do that? Like, it feels like it's a very slippery slope here.
Does at some point the town go in, remove it, and then build the property owner?
Yeah.
Because supposing the property owner couldn't afford to remove the bamboo, but it's really a threat to the next property, because it can keep running underneath, is it like a sidewalk that's not being cleaned? That, I see exactly the slippery slope you mean.
Well, yeah, but any code that we establish, I mean, we don't have a building inspector running around in everybody's house looking what's going on.
That's correct.
Usually, it's brought to our attention, and this would be brought to our attention by a neighbor, and then at least you'd have something in the code, you seem to disagree.
Yeah, because people come in our office all the time. Typically, Wendy is the one who deals with them, because this gets into Steve's purview of whether or not he's going out to look at something. And this sounds to me, and I'd have to check to make sure that it falls within that category, but it sounds to me like a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. And whenever there's a neighbor-to-neighbor issue, our office and the town is not the one who adjudicates the neighbor-to-neighbor issues. So that's a problem. If it's a neighbor, if it's a property owner-to-town issue, that's one thing. But a neighbor-to-neighbor issue, the town can't be the one...
Yeah, but you're not asking, you're not asking it to the town to adjudicate, you're just asking the town...
Let me finish, it's like trees, we get people coming in all the time related to the fact that somebody's tree is leaning over into somebody else's property. And the office says that the neighbors have to work that out. Not, it's not something that the town can go in and get involved in. The neighbors have to work that out between themselves. I hear this all the time from my office with people coming in.
Sure.
So this sounds a little bit, I'd have to check, but it sounds a little bit to me problematic in that sense, in terms of enforcement.
Yeah, but your tree is different from something like this. Here, if there's, on the books, there's something that says, hey, let's say, bamboo has to be restrained as of wherever it was roughly twenty eighteen, okay? The, if, we would not be a...
We can say that, though.
Okay.
Nobody is going to go out and photograph or identify where things are.
Okay, but let me finish, if we had something on the books that was like any other code that we have put on the books, and it's on the books, and somebody makes a complaint, just like somebody makes a complaint that there's an accessory apartment that's illegal, we deal with that, the zoning board deals with that. I'm just saying is that if it's on the books, you have something, and you don't adjudicate something between the neighbors, you're, if it's drawn to our attention, we would be required to enforce a town code. That's all I'm saying, you would, no, this is not a tree situation, and there's established rules with regard to trees also. If a tree is going over your property, you have the right to cut that tree. You can't take the tree down, but you can cut the leaves off. So, but that's an accepted rule.
So how, how would the town enforce it? It's, so bamboo are an invasive species?
I'm just reading how they're doing it out on Long Island. They declared it on Fire Island completely illegal.
Right.
And, you know, without repeating all of that. And if it's found growing upon property, that shall constitute evidence that the, that it has occurred with the consent of the owner. Effect of this state, it shall become law, the planting, growing, shall be prohibited within the village, and removal. If it's found in the event. The village shall notify the property owner with the, that the owner has invaded village property.
Because he has it growing, oh, wow.
Yeah.
Is responsible for the removal of the bamboo from village property.
But it doesn't say neighbor-to-neighbor?
Uh...
I think that's in the next paragraph of the same sample code.
I gotta believe it's in here.
Like anything, if there's a complaint, there's a mechanism for fining or restitution.
And that's the same thing in the brocade, if you look at the brocade.
Violate, any provision of this section shall be guilty of the violation.
So what is the town board looking for?
And each and every day.
Recommend on this?
The town board is looking to you and to the open space committee to give them your, you know, feelings and recommendation, do you want them to enact this type of code?
Well, right now, we're just dealing with bamboo, but if you looked at the state, they have about thirty different plants, trees, and growing medians that are prohibited right now.
Yeah, but the question is, if you pass a law that deals with invasive plants, now, if you had no invasive plant law, then everybody's free to do whatever they want. But if you have an invasive plant law, then you have to follow it up with what, I mean, why make a law that says, well, you can't have this, but we don't really care if it grows all over the place because we have no way of enforcing it? That doesn't seem to be logical to me.
I think the one thing missing from the packet, and I should have pulled it up, is the text of the actual regulation. These local laws are jumping off the necessity or the ability to regulate it at a local level, under the state regulation. And because in their quick answer sheet, it says that who will enforce the regulations? That's the state regs. Regulations will be enforced by the DEC with assistance from the Department of Agriculture and Markets. I would wanna look at the requirements of notice and et cetera as set out in the regulation.
Right.
And then how do we?
Adapt.
Adapt underneath it, I mean, what's the point of us regulating? And then they come in and say, well, no, we're gonna collect the fine. And I would assume that these municipalities have done that, but I think for us to look at it, we'd wanna look at the state regulation and then look together with the local law and see how they work together and make sure we're not stepping on each other's territory and we're not doing the work that we're already by virtue of our taxes paying the state to do and be, you know, double regulating something that everybody is already paying the state to do and putting an undue burden on the town.
Just what you say, what I don't understand, since bamboo is illegal, I don't understand why anybody that's grown bamboo in the town of Solmers hasn't broken a law that the town has a right to enforce.
Maybe grandfather did.
Or the enforcement, if the enforcement agency is the DEC or the Department of Agriculture and Markets, then to notice them that there's a problem and then have them follow up and not have it be, certainly, you can generate revenue by charging fines, but is that what you wanna be doing? And to be creating a whole set of hierarchies to do this throughout the town?
I mean, realistically, whatever those state regulations say, you're not gonna get DEP or DEC coming down to individual homeowners to regulate, you know, on individual properties, any place, bamboo, I mean, it's...
Well, certainly, if you had a homeowner who was a subject of an application for an action, they'd be interested. At that point, they would be.
But on a regular basis, I mean...
I'm not sure, I'm not...
I mean, Jan is really stating so many of the things that the town is responsible for. MS four regulations and cleanouts and stuff, it simply can't even deal with the maintenance responsibilities, so.
Yeah, you're right, you're saying, wait a second, I'll give you a...
I'm not suggesting that you don't do it.
No, but I'll give you, for instance, okay? We inherited Chills, have a culvert that is being slowly deteriorating, okay? And for some reason, a type three trout stream goes through this culvert, okay?
Love it.
Okay, there's never been a trout in this stream, a trout would have to walk through to get through, okay? And we want to repair this culvert. Well, the DEC was down on us like crazy, telling us, you can't do anything, we wanna see all your plans, we wanna see everything. So they come, they came on our private property to tell us, and control, and tell us what we have to do. So I wouldn't be so cavalier to say that they're not gonna, that they're gonna not do anything. This is not the Public Service Commission, the DEC is a pretty strong and powerful group of people.
Yeah, especially with trout, I totally agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, they came down and we're, we asked to put in a little swale temporarily to stop the water from deteriorating the culvert, and they said, no, you can't do that. You have to wait till the DEC approves all of the drawings, which is gonna take two to three months to do. Meanwhile, we're gonna be in the middle of the winter. So they do get around, unfortunately. I'm just sorry, that was a...
Well, I'm gonna say that I think if we do make a recommendation to proceed or not to proceed, whatever it is, it should be more inclusive than just simply bamboo. I think we should include all of the invasive species listed now, and as species are added to the invasive species list, you know, that they be included as well, so.
It's like referencing that you had to be compliant with the most recent Stormwater Manual, any of its updates, yeah. You'd have the same language we already have in resolutions, yes.
Exactly, so it should include all the invasive species, but I'm still hesitating whether I think it should be... I have to write up this recommendation, and I don't know what the board is recommending.
Yeah.
I don't know that we ever will.
No.
Yeah, I don't know that we will either.
Can we continue this at another meeting? I mean...
Sure.
Sure.
It might help to have council here too as well, and get a copy of the regulations, see what it says.
From the state, so that we can see.
Pull the state reg and see how that works, how it flows with these locals and reality of enforcement.
By the next meeting, bamboo should have advanced.
Yeah, at least another foot. Unless there's more, I'm just gonna make a motion that we adjourn. Does anybody else? And for the record, our next meeting is on the tenth. And just to remind everybody, we have a site walk a week from Saturday and the following week.
On the sixth.
Yes, a week from Saturday.
And the thirteenth, yes.
So second to...
Next Saturday?
A week from, a week from this Saturday.
Oh, that's better.
I'll second adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.